The Topeka City Council meeting will come to order if you would rise and give your attention to Councilman Jefferson, Councilman Emerson for the learning a new name, or the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, pray with me please. Our Father, Devin, we just thank you that we can gather here tonight, Father, and we just ask your blessing on the people that have gathered here and on this meeting. And, Father, just grasp your wisdom and guidance as we discuss issues and make decisions that affect people's lives. Father, I know it's an honor that none of us take lightly, and we just ask your blessing on our city, our state, this great nation that we're so fortunate to live in. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation tonight in honor of the Sunflower Music Festival, a very significant part of the cultural aspects of Topeka, and most significantly, this year, it is their 30th year. Whereas the Sunflower Music Festival presents an annual series of orchestra concerts, chamber music evenings, jazz concerts, and other artistic events each June in Washburn University's White Concert Hall, and whereas the festival is organized with its first concert in 1987 and has been presented to the Topeka community for 30 consecutive years, and whereas festival concerts are sponsored by Topeka businesses, private donors, and philanthropic foundations, which allow concerts to be free of charge, and whereas participating musicians come from national and international symphonies and musical institutions each year, and whereas the Blanche Brighton Institute was developed for the advanced study of chamber music for high school and college musicians for a week of learning and performance coached by Sunflower Orchestra musicians, and whereas the Sunflower Music Festival is a festival that provides world-class cultural entertainment, which greatly enhances the quality of life in Topeka. And in commemoration of the festival's outstanding work now and for the past 30 years, I Larry Wogast, Mayor of Topeka, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2016 of Sunflower Music Festival Month. Let's acknowledge their efforts. Now, I have some young people that are going to join me right up here. Probably about two lines. Join us.
Young people?
Young people. This is all the young people in the audience. Well, and actually, these are the newest city employees, just starting. Well, it's pleased to announce the City of Topeka has a summer youth program for the first time. It's for teenagers, 14 to 17. This program was originated in the development and the discussion and the budget meetings last year among the city council, and Councilwoman Ortiz was one of the leaders of that effort. The council put money in the budget this year so that we could have a program for young people. The interesting thing is we have 365 applications, which shows the interest of young people and also, as a testament to their need, the need for youth employment. And we certainly want to request that all entities in the community, businesses, organizations, provide effort, and many do, so that youth have employment during the summer. There were 11 selected, 10 are with us tonight. They started to work yesterday, right? On the job, and they'll be here for eight weeks through August the 5th. But, and one important thing is on Mondays, they spend the day in life skill training, learning such things as financial literacy, computer training, nutritional education, leadership, and these are important things so that when they get other jobs later in life, they will have those skills. So with this, we certainly acknowledge, welcome, glad to have you here, glad to be a part of this. I'm going to have them come by, say their name and their school and which department they're working in the city, which department they're in. Okay, you're going to be first, right here.
Hi, I'm Maya Miller, and I work in the water distribution, and I go to Topeka West.
Hello, I'm Javier Rodriguez. I'm going to Washburn Rural High School, and I work at the Water Pollution Control.
I'm Makari Yates. I go to Topeka West, and I'm in the Neighborhood Relations Department.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Lee, and I go to Topeka High School. I work in the Engineering Division.
Hello, my name is Cassandra Davis, and I go to Shawnee Heights High School, well, going to Shawnee Heights High School, and I'm the, sorry, I am in the Communications City 4.
Good afternoon, my name is Adriana Buxton, and I went to French Middle School, and I will be working in the Human Resources Department.
Hi, I'm Julie Segarnhire. I go to Shawnee Heights High School, and I'm working in the Water Plant Department.
Water Plant, alright, and next.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Ortiz, good evening, Topeka High School. And I'll be working with City Council.
Hi, I'm Cody Simonson. I go to Seamen, and I work in the Street Maintenance Department.
I'm Andrew Bayless, and I'm homeschooled, and I work in the government, oh, sorry. Development Services. No one knows what that is.
Hello, I'm Thomas Rutherford. I'm going to Topeka High School, and I am working in the City Council Office.
Mr. Mayor, I can say something.
Sure, Councilwoman.
You know, spearheading is one thing, but it took nine votes, 10 votes, however many votes, and I would just like to thank the council for putting that money in the budget, and I hope we continue, because as you can see, they are all very bright and sparky. I'd also like to thank Jackie Russell, Monique, Sasha, and all the city staff that I might have forgot somebody that also has worked hard on the interview process, on, you know, challenging each other. I'd like to thank, you know, just the whole process of, it was tough for them to pick one person out of their little group, and I had a vision, and I gave it to Housing, Monique with Housing and Neighborhood Development, we keep changing the name, that's why I'm going crazy up here, and they went above and beyond, Mr. Mayor, from the mentoring and even to their uniforms that they will have, and I think it's awesome. And I'd also like to thank all the mentors that will be out there that are the employees. It takes a lot to take time to mentor them, because mentoring is really a testimony, and we heard a very powerful one yesterday, so I just want to say thanks, and they'll do a job, a great job, but it's not just about me, it's about us and what we've done to step forward to help the youth, so thank you.
Very good, thank you, nicely stated. Mr. City Manager, we have several presentations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Kaufman to step forward, he's going to provide the first quarter financial report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So tonight, I have before you the first quarter report for 2016. As I always note, these are all preliminary numbers, and nothing is final until the final audit. So for the first quarter, we do, total revenues are up 1%, so this includes all budgeted funds for the city that we're reporting here and aggregating everything up, so 70.9 million compared to 7.31 million in 2015. 2016 expenditures are up 8%, about 3.5 million from 48.18 million to 44.67 million. So these are key revenues that we watch on a monthly basis to see how they're going. They make up about 75% of all revenues for the city. So the ad valorem taxes, which we had a flat mill levy for this past year, they're currently up about 1%. Sales tax is currently flat, and whenever we look at sales tax, we also look deeper and look at the individual fields that make up sales tax. So currently, utilities is down about 15%. Construction is actually up 10% for sales tax collections. Retail collections are up 1%. Information, which includes cable, internet, is down 7%. Foods, food is down 1%, and this is a relatively small category, but I still like to keep track of it. Arts, entertainment, and recreation is up 16%. So while that has been flat year-to-date, we've also seen some good trends in April and May that'll roll into the next quarter and have had some good returns there. Water fees are down 1%. Wastewater fees are up 2%, and then franchise fees are down 8%. And franchise fees is a pretty volatile area, depending on numerous things, such as price of gas, which is currently depressed, weather, so there's lots of volatility within our franchise fee collections. So all funds, these are major expenditures, which we break down into five different categories, is up 8% this year, so total expenditure is about 48.18 million. Personnel is up 1% this year, which is fairly typical based on contractual obligations that we have to meet. Contractual payments, you can see, is up about 1.1 million or 8% this year. That's primarily due to street activity, increase in street activity, and then also we had a fairly large stormwater payment for the levy project that we're conducting of about $550,000. That really drove up that contractual amount. Commodities is up 40% to 3.11 million. That 40%, a lot of it's primarily due to some timing purchases for chemicals in the water department, and then there's also been some heavier costs for repair parts and materials and supplies for some water breaks. We had one motor pump alone that costed about $211,000 that had to be replaced. Other payments is up 12%, that's about $1 million. That's one of the primary drivers there is health claims, where we've seen about a $550,000 increase in health claims compared to the prior year at this time. Capital outlay, you can see, is up 491%, that's about $310,000 difference. That's primarily a timing between when capital outlay type equipment was purchased last year compared to this year. So what are the growth factors? Like I mentioned earlier, we have a flat mill levy, but we're seeing some growth there and up 1%, which is good, means that people are paying more on time with their tax payments, so that's a good sign. Sales tax is flat, we'll continue to watch and monitor, but as I mentioned already, April and May collections came in pretty, pretty high. We'll continue to monitor franchise fees, and then also water utility collections, we keep a watch on that, just, we're having another fairly wet season, especially through May. It's dried out a little, so maybe that trend will continue. Total general fund, so total revenues of 30.4 million in 2016 compared to expenditures of 20.67. You can see we have a net change there of about 9.7 million in the general fund year-to-date. Water, total revenue is about 6.7 million compared to expenditures of 7.53 million with a net change of loss of $820,000. Wastewater, you can see, collections, total revenue is 6.3 million for '16 compared to expenditures of 4.45 for a net change there of 1.87 million to the good. And then stormwater, we have total revenues of 1.72 million and expenditures of 1.7 million for a net change of about $200,000. So that is a very high-level overview of the first quarter report. This report is available online, and you should also have hard copies for review. There's a lot more detailed information that gets into each of the funds. If you have any questions, I could stand for them now.
Are there questions, Mr. Kaufman? Councilwoman Hiller.
Mayor, it's mid-year, so, and you're showing the general fund, all these four funds, how do you see this looking in terms of year-end and how the budget would come out at the end of the year?
Councilmember Hiller, it's fairly early right now, I mean, we can, we'll start looking at projections soon. I can tell you right now, from the general fund, I think overall, we're in a healthier position with the general fund. The utility funds are a little bit harder to say where we're going to be at, just because a lot of the capital projects that'll be rolling through, but we'll be taking a hard look at those very soon.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, good report, appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, I have another presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Gerber to introduce the next topic pertaining to Public Works and Utilities. Mr. Gerber.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, thank you. As you know, one of the things that we've wanted to do from a Public Works and Utilities perspective is a better job of keeping the governing body informed as to what's going on with our projects. Specifically, we wanted to try to mirror the quarterly financial reports that the council gets, and so it's no coincidence that tonight, we're presenting this first quarterly Public Works and Utilities Report right after the financial report. We intend to provide a high-level overview, and then, as Mr. Kaufman does, answer any specific questions that the council might have about ongoing or future projects. But before we, but before we get into that, we're also very excited tonight to roll out our latest endeavor, and that is our capital projects dashboard. This is part of the Socratis suite of open data transparency. It mirrors our Topeka checkbook and the budget portal and open data, those, as you can see, you have, you have in front of you a handout, which I'm going to walk through each of these pages with you, but as you can see at the top of that, again, this is part of the Socratis suite, and so the intent for this particular dashboard is to have a listing of all our active Public Works and Utilities projects on the website 24/7 so that you, staff, citizens can go here and get up-to-date project information. Our intent on, we're really excited about this, I think this is state-of-the-art, I think we're kind of a trendsetter in this regard. You don't see very many of these across the country, to tell you the truth. And so a lot of credit for that goes to Sherri Schoonover, IT Director, she had a lot of assistance from Leah Thomas, who works in our budget office, a couple others, Jason Peak from Public Works and Latoya Martinez from Utilities. Those folks have put a lot of time and effort into this, and specifically, someone like the Latoya will provide a lot of work on the back end, keeping these projects up to date. It's our intent to make sure these stay up to date on a weekly basis, so that we're providing accurate, timely, and reliable information to the citizens and the governing body. So again, just to kind of walk through this, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Peak, and he can, he's going to go through some projects very specifically, but as you can see on the first page of your sheet, which mirrors what's up on the screen here, that's the home page. It allows you to go through various categories of projects, public safety, traffic, utilities, streets, city sales tax. If you want, you can isolate council projects by district, or, so if I clicked on a random district number, that would pop up. We have it set to the entire city mode right now, in the interest of not being parochial and being fair to everyone. So another kind of cool feature of this is if you hover over a icon there, it pops up what the project is, and then you can click on it, and then it takes you directly to that project, and it gives you specifically, so the one I happened to click on was a traffic signal replacement for intersections, it tells you what the budget is, what's been spent, when the estimated completion is, and whether it's, what phase of the project it's in, whether it's started or not started, and planning, design, construction, completed, finished, et cetera. It's a really intuitive process, very user-friendly, I would say. And so just to kind of take you to the second page on your handout, that's the public safety piece. If you click on that, it goes to the several active public safety projects. And again, not to belabor the point too much, but then as you, as you go down through each of these categories, for example, you could, you could click on Streets, which would be the next page, it would, it would bring up a map of where those projects are located, you could click on that, hopefully, there you go, and it brings up Southwest 21st, Indian Hills, Irish Indian Hills, and it tells you where the, what the budget is, again, what's been spent, estimated completion time, et cetera. So this is, again, we believe, really exciting, is going to provide accurate, reliable, and timely information for, for everyone involved in the process. Are there any specific questions on that before I turn it over to Mr. Peak?
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I seen that it was, here we go, on the stages, when it says "not started."
Yes, ma'am.
So can you put it on?
So if you wanted...
Does it have a list or something, or?
Yes, so if you wanted to, and you went to this home screen and clicked on "not started," it should come up with a list of projects that aren't started.
That are slated to be worked but not started?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, this is, this is live right now, it has about, we have 200 active projects, not all of the projects are in, are in, put on here yet, but they will be in the very near future.
We had one, it said "construction" there. If I can continue, so is that why it's so important to make sure that we're updated, and we continue to be updated so we can see what's, where the progress is? Is that correct?
Councilwoman Ortiz, yes. And, and as we've noted in meetings before, we haven't always done the best job keeping the council up to date in ongoing CIP projects, future CIP projects, the link between previous projects, and what might have changed in, in new iterations of CIP. So this is just a, one more attempt to try to keep you up to date. This portal combined with the quarterly reports that we're going to be doing on an ongoing basis.
Does, where does it show who is, you know, like, so many projects are being done, and then sometimes they leave and they don't finish, I think I've taken Mr. Coulson in my district on a couple, how, does this tell who's responsible for that? Like, the, who's the construction worker, or who's responsible?
City Manager. Mr. Peak also has, I'll recognize both of you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, please step forward, I'll just say something very quickly. I think what Councilwoman Ortiz is specifically referencing is a lot of times, we'll finish the actual project, and then there will still be the cones and the tape and some other things up there, and that's certainly something that we've talked about, that the project managers internally need to make sure when they close the project, they close it out also, and as Mr. Gerber stated, I think we haven't done a really great job at that, we're trying to do better, and Jason's going to tell you how.
Sure, so, thank you for that pitch there, City Manager. So this is, the CIP portal, it's a dashboard, right? So it's, it's a quick kind of glance of these different projects. The other piece that we're working on to this is that these will also have a link to take you to more detailed information on the projects, i.e. when we have a public meeting coming up, it would list, if we're in the construction phase, who the contractor is, the contact information, who our project manager is, with contact information, and yes, I mean, we do have projects that are wrapping up, they're not completed, done, we also have issues with winter shutdown, and getting those things addressed, and those are all things we're working on, so.
Okay, I don't quite know if I, that answers my question, but I'll play with it, I'll get with one of you guys, because that's, that's pretty interesting, I think that's neat, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Claire.
Sometimes I have a hard time finding, is this, like, click from the homepage, or do you go to somewhere on the homepage to get this dashboard?
Councilwoman Claire, thank you. I actually should have given that address at the start of my presentation. You can get to it from the homepage, but the very specific address is projects.topeka.org. And again, once you get to this, or once you get to the budget portal or the checkbook, you can get to any of them because they're all interconnected.
Yeah, well, I want to congratulate getting us to this level, I think it's fantastic, and I know it's a learning process, and we'll be going through it, but I think it's, again, the communication is excellent, seeing better where everything is all the time, where we can get our questions answered, we know.
Indeed, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also at your place tonight are two major project update lists, and Jason specifically is going to rock, walk through the Public Works one, there's also utility one, utility one that lists three major projects that are specifically associated with some street projects. One of the questions, the last comment I'll make before I turn it over to Mr. Peak, is one of the questions we've been getting from a staff perspective is, we're calling this the Year of the Streets, but we're not seeing very many orange cones out there yet. Indeed, even though we are spending upwards $35 million plus on the streets this year, it is the Year of the Streets, the Year of Public Works, Utilities, we have just gotten a couple major projects out for bid, so in the very near future, you'll start to see more orange barrels out there. Additionally, the other comment I might make about that is, even though we're investing $35-plus million in streets and other infrastructure, you're really only talking about a very small portion of the overall lane miles of the city, 1,500 lane miles, and we're probably talking about 30 miles total. If you talk about water and wastewater, you're talking about an even smaller percentage. It's significant work, it's going to make a significant impact, but as you look at that as an overall percentage of the streets, that's maybe why some folks are commenting that way. So with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Peak at this point.
Sure. Thank you for having me here tonight. There's a handout we passed out to you that we've, we've coined the term of, the Orange Barrel Report, getting back to, I think, comments about our city flower being orange cones, and really, it's just kind of a briefing document for these quarterly updates to let you know where we are in the current year with projects that are under... you know where we are in the current year with projects that are under design and headed for construction. And so, as you walk through this list, you can see the topics under construction. These are projects we physically have contracts for contractors on board and working, and that represents about $20 million. Of the $37 million we'll be spending on street work is contracted and under construction. The second column is what we call a warding. These are projects where, as Mr. Gerber said, that we put out on the street for bid and solicited contracts. We're working that through our, just the legal process of having those contracts executed. That represents about another $10 million worth of contracts that contractors will be starting here in the next couple of weeks. So, as we move towards the end of June, we'll have $30 million, of that $37 million, under construction throughout the city. And the next category we have is bidding. These are the projects, as we place them, advertise out, solicit contractors' bid. We only have one, and we take bids on that tomorrow, and that's the Southeast California Avenue. This is where we're widening from the two lanes to three lanes on that project, and that's about what we estimate to be a $3.5 million project. It also includes water line replacement out there on 37th Avenue, and along portions of California. Then, you know, the, the last few categories we have designed, so we have about six projects remaining that are in what we call the final design phase, and will be bidding in June and July, and that represents about $3.5 million worth of work. So, literally by July, we will have all that $37 million, the Year of the Streets, under con, under construction throughout the city. A couple of projects that I wanted to highlight was, we've talked about Seward Avenue, that was one of the projects that started, I believe, about a month after I got here. You know, we had 33 days of rain in the first 45 days of construction on that project, and not just a light spring drizzle. I mean, we had over 17 inches of rain. But we've been working diligently with that contractor, and we'll deliver and have that portion of Seward open for Fiesta. We had the project meeting on that. As long as we have good weather and rolling, we anticipate having asphalt down for the trolleys and things that come in on Fiesta, and will continue to make hay while the weather's good on that project. Last week, we also took bids on Southwest Wanamaker, basically from 10th Avenue down to Southwest 21st. This is a, a major mill and overlay of that, that corridor, as well as West 21st Street. And one of the things that we've done internally is, we've had conversations with contractors and some of our consultants about timing and phasing to make all this work. So the intersection portion of that project's actually going to be, the 21st Wanamaker will be constructed in spring of 2017, and that was basically something we looked at to retool and, and make sure we could get these projects delivered. I think the other thing I want to highlight out of the, the projects we have going is, we talked a lot about neighborhood streets, and there was $12 million put into this fiscal year for mill and overlay projects and neighborhood streets. Today, standing for you, we have $9.5 million of that under contract and currently active construction of that $12 million. And like I said, by the end of July, we'll have the remainder of that done. And a large part of that credit goes to the staff within Public Works and Utilities for, for really kind of burning the midnight oil to get all this stuff done and out there. And I'm just really excited that we, we were able to get this work done. It was one of the conversations Jim and Doug had with me when I came on, what is the expectation? And it was, I get these projects out, and so we're on track to meet that.
Okay. What kinds of information? Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Why do we wait until June to bid a project instead of doing it in January, so the cones can go out in March? I mean, it just seems like that would be a friendlier construction season.
The honest answer is, we have not adopted or adapted our internal processes to kind of look at these schedule requirements to, to deliver this increased workload. As Doug mentioned, Latoya and some of the others within Public Works and Utilities, that's been a major project with us, is, is really defining that workflow process, so that we can say, when you guys approve a project in the CIP, what is that anticipated duration? And then looking out to the future and say, okay, we need to be bidding projects really from October through about February, needs to be our bidding period for contractors. And so, we just have not been in the habit of doing that, and we're working to change that.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Peak, I, I heard you say we'll be ready for Fiesta?
Yes, ma'am.
And I seen Jim give you the thumbs up, I hope we're ready for Fiesta. There's a lot of people down there.
Absolutely. It's, it's been a high priority. I mean, I attend the weekly construction meetings, so that we're keeping tabs on the contractor, and make, we're working seven days a week out there to get that project done.
Okay.
You know, what, what "ready for Fiesta" means, and as we shared with you in the email, is, we will have the road open to traffic-
Right.
-for the trolleys. We'll have it safe and secure for all the pedestrians, but there's still physically will be a portion of Seward-
Right.
-that, that's closed and not accessible, but we will be ready for Fiesta.
We're going to put some boards down or something?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. I know, we had the German Fest over there last Saturday and Sunday, and it's challenging when this, you know, when the streets close, but apparently, a lot of people were there, so they got there.
Yes.
They found a way to get there.
Yes.
Councilman Hiller?
At this juncture, could I follow up with a, another question about how to access the new dashboard? I think it was Councilwoman Claire asked, you know, sometimes, when something's new, it's on the kind of banner on the homepage, and you see it, but it's not there for long, necessarily. And then you have to know what department to click on, and then go into that department to find something. So if I could reiterate that question with a little more detail to it, could you tell us exactly how we will find this now, and how we will find it long-term on the website? If you know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, if you go to the website right now, at the bottom of the page, very prominently at the bottom of the page is Project Portal, which is where you would click to find that. It's also then linked to Open Checkbook and the Open Budget Portal at the bottom of the page. We would anticipate that remaining on there for a significant period of time, so, so that folks are able to access it.
I'm not looking at it, obviously, but those are like the little tiny letters that are like yellow and-
Let me see if I'm capable of pulling this up.
Purple or something?
Can you type on there, Jason? Type topeka.org?
W-W-W.
Then you can see it right there, Project Portal, Open Checkbook, and Open Budget Portal.
Uh-huh.
So again, it's featured fairly prominently there.
And those will stay there? I mean, that's the banner that I was talking about, but they'll always be there?
Councilwoman, I'd say "always" is a long time, but I-
Okay.
25 years is-
Good point. But sometimes, we promote something that's new in that kind of ticker-tape for a while, and then it regresses appropriately back into its long-term position, and I didn't know-
Okay, I, we'll, we'll, we'll work that out, okay? We'll get specific information on how to find it. Is there any other questions for Mr. Peak? This is a good presentation, I, on this utility project update, are those, what we call the, those are the major ones in the city? Is that what this would be, because they're different parts of the city and water, et cetera?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The intent of this utility project update was to mirror the update that Mr. Peak provided, so you'll notice on there, Seward Avenue, Wanamaker.
Yeah.
And so, those are utilities associated with street work-
Okay, okay, I see.
-or, street work associated with utilities, as we like to say sometimes.
Okay, very good. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a little bit of inside baseball here. I, I wanted to be evident to everybody that this has been a very strategic approach to both in terms of creating visibility as to what we do, based on the, the questions that, that, that citizens have, and also the councils had. And also, it's my expectation that next year, we'll be looking back on information as it proceeds and decisions and processes, as it flows out of Public Works and Utilities, in the same way that we look at finance today. I, I think that there was a significant operational challenge that we're overcoming, but we certainly haven't overcome it totally yet today.
Very good. Thank you. Now will you start the official part of the meeting? We'll have the roll call.
Mayor, well, guess?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Della Isla?
Jensen?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Harmon?
Cohen?
Here.
And Harmon.
And councilmembers Noah Isla and Harmon are both, both out of the city on business. And councilmembers, you have under the, that material you've just gone through, there are two resolutions there, and they are, with Councilmember Hiller, would you want to briefly describe, and they will be adding to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. These are both time-sensitive, and that is why they need to be added, so that other permits can be secured. We're always supposed to tell why if it's meant. One, and they are both for the July 2nd Kansas Avenue celebration. One is the noise permits, and one is the alcohol permits.
Okay. Unless there is consideration by the council, we will add those, with your permission, they will be added to the agenda, into the consent agenda. So, and also, councilmembers, we will have one executive session tonight, short executive session. That completes all the changes to the deletions, so we're ready for the consent agenda for the clerk to read.
A is denial of a tort claim appeal submitted by Vicki Fulmer in the amount of $6,450 for reimbursement of damages sustained to her property when the Topeka Police Department executed an arrest at the residence. B is denial of a tort claim appeal submitted by Bertha Sanders, seeking the replacement of the storm drainage pipe behind her residence in an effort to alleviate future flooding. C is denial of a tort claim appeal submitted by Francis McNeil, seeking removal or money to pay for the removal of concrete debris located on his property. D is approval of a workers' compensation settlement for Joseph Ralston, Topeka Police Depart, Police Officer, in the amount of $19,711 for the permanent partial impairment of his right shoulder for injury suffered on January 6, 2014. E is approval of workers' compensation settlement for Vivian Roberti in the amount of $17,860.12, a portion between permanent partial disability in the amount of $11,360.12, and future medical in the amount of $6,500 for bilateral carpal tunnel syndrome. F is board appointment recommending the reappointment of Jim Daniel to the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority Board for a term ending July 1, 2020. G is board appointment recommending the appointment of Dr. Patricia Doll to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term ending May 19, 2018. H is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Raheen Razee to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 7, 2018. I is board appointment recommending the appointment of Orion Jordan to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 7, 2018. J is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the Jensen Beckley Wedding. K is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as a Tap That Topeka, a Capitol Brew Festival to be held on June 25, 2016. L is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Randy Wheat an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. M is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Downtown Topeka, Inc. an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibition. N are minutes of the regular meeting of May 17, 2016. O is a list of applications, cereal beverage renewals, staff is requesting approval. P is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Downtown Topeka, Inc. an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. And Q is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as a Kansas Avenue celebration, and approving the issuance of a special event retailer's permit.
Okay, that is the consent agenda for action. Councilman Cohen?
I move to approve.
To approve. Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any discussion? All of the favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes. Mr. Jensen abstaining?
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read. I would like to introduce several of the new appointees. Rehan Riza, you would stand as a new appointee to the Human Relations Commission, Orion Jordan is a new appointee to the Human Relations Commission, and Jim Daniels is being reappointed to the Topeka Transit Metropolitan Authority. Thank you very much, we appreciate your willingness to serve. That completes the consent agenda. We will move on to the action items. A, public hearing and ordinance.
A is a public hearing and ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson relating to the vacation of the north 350 feet of Public Alley Right of Way, lying between Southwest Mulvane Street and Southwest College Avenue, and between Southwest 11th Street and Southwest Munson Avenue in the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking Mr. Feinder, Planning Director, to present information on this item and answer any questions that this body may have.
City Manager?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Your Honor, councilmembers. Tonight, this is a proposal to vacate an alley in the Elmhurst neighborhood, between 11th and Munson, from Mulvane to College. It's a 15-foot-wide alley that is, on both sides of the, of the alley, is owned by Topeka Bible Church. So, the city wholly supports this vacation, seeing how we primarily maintain an alley for, for basically one, one owner here. The entire alley is not being vacated, only about two-thirds of it. There are five houses at the end of that block, so they will still have access to their portion of the alley, and we have required that the alley not be a dead end. So, the church has granted an access easement across their parking lot to Mulvane from the alley, so we can have a turnaround for service vehicles and, and the residents. The only other condition that we are requiring is retaining a utility easement for sewer and, and the phone. So, that could be granted tonight with passing of the ordinance. So with that, we stand for a motion to approve and recommend approval.
Are there any questions for Mr. Feinder? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Bill, I think you misspoke. I think you said they own both sides of the alley. You meant both sides, property on both sides of the alley, is that what you're trying to say?
That, that.
Okay. Because I know that there were some people that were opposed to it, and that's, is that the part that they have access to now?
Councilwoman Ortiz, yes. So there's, there's five houses at the bottom there that still take access to the alley. They, they believe that the alley was being, all of it was being vacated, that's, that's not the, that's not the, what's being proposed, so.
So what, but, but the people that want, that didn't want it, they're not getting it, is that correct? That's the housing, the houses there? That was my understanding?
The houses will still have the, the alley access for, for their properties, and then it will terminate somewhat about, about 100 feet north of the, of the last house on the, on the block there. So they'll be able to actually go through the parking lot of the church to Mulvane, they don't, so there'll be a turnaround, in essence, there won't be a dead end, if the church decides to expand their buildings or their parking lot and block, block that, that part of the alley off in the future. So, so they, they do have full access to the alley behind their properties.
Because when this first started, I was getting a couple of people that were opposed to it, but I haven't received any calls lately, so is there anybody else that's opposed to it?
We, Councilwoman Ortiz, we have the Neighborhood Information Meeting, and I think once that got aired and they understood what, what was going on, we didn't hear anything else either after that.
And I think a lot of the problem was, they shut off the alley and were doing construction and different things on the parking lot, and they thought it was us, and it was actually the church. And that really missed, you know, the residents were very upset with that, because they thought it was the city, and they didn't know what was going on, they didn't have access to different things. And, and the, one last question, the waste trucks, they're able to get through there, like, okay, or there's no issues with that?
That is correct. That's why we had an access easement dedicated between Mulvane and the alley. The church has already granted that and recorded it, so trash and service trucks can, can actually, they don't have to turn around, they can go through the parking lot to, to get to the street.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Oh, seeing none of this, we do require to have a public hearing on this. Therefore, the public hearing is now open. Anyone who wish to speak to this issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilwoman Claire?
This is my home church, so I would move to approve.
Move to approve. Is there a second? Councilman Jensen? Councilman Jensen moves seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. We go to item B, scheduling a public hearing.
B is schedule a public hearing on June 21, 2016 for the imposition of a special assessments for pond repair and improvements in Lawrence Bay, Lawrence Bay Villas, Lawrence Bay Estates, Wanamaker Meadows, and Bryan's addition number three subdivisions, and ratify the city clerk's action in publishing on June 6, 2016 the appropriate notices in the official city newspaper.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Kaufman to step forward and explain specifically what we're asking you to approve and ratify today.
Mayor, members of the council, so we came before you on May 17 to ask for you to set a public hearing. After that, the public hearing was set when we, we were still gathering some of the final costs, and because of some of the complexities of these projects with a very large area in Lawrence Bay, we felt at that time it would be better to come back to you to ask to reset those public hearings to a future date, just so we took our time, we weren't hurrying, and that we made sure everything was correct. So, we feel we're at that point, and we're ready to move forward and set a public hearing. I can, I want to go over real briefly again, kind of this process for how special assessments are derived. So, once again, special assessments are districts that a city draws a boundary on a map, and they do improvements such as streets, water, sewer, within those districts. Once those assessments are bonded, they're placed on the property tax rolls. So, if an individual homeowner lives in a special, an assessment district, when they pay their taxes, they would pay back the city that assessment to help us pay off those bonds and recoup those costs over a 20-year period. This is a tool that's been utilized, it's been allowed since 1957 in the state of Kansas. It's utilized across the state of Kansas. As you remember, last year, we had a, adopted a new policy on special assessments as well that encouraged some more stringent guidelines for this economic development tool. So, here's how the process overall works. So, really, the first step is there's either a petition submitted, or the city, or the governing body calls a public hearing to consider a project. So, after that public hearing or the petition submitted, the council, the governing body at that time would consider a resolution, which would then approve the projects and also the district. After those resolutions are approved, then you would proceed with construction, bid out everything, and award a construction bid, and then go through the process. After that contract is complete, all the final costs are resolved, then is the time that you set the public hearing. So, really, tonight, what we're asking for is really that fifth, about the fifth step in this complete process for a special assessment district. Once a public hearing is complete, completed, then you would consider an ordinance that authorizes levying those special assessments onto the tax rolls. And then after that ordinance is approved, that would start the payment of specials. Now, there is also a pay-in period that people are allowed to pay in during a 30-day window before we sell the bonds, and then after the bonds are sold, we put them on the tax rolls. So, we'll sell bonds in August, and then we'll work with the county to get those on the November tax bill that will go out. I might stop there because that's a lot to chew, and if you have any process questions.
Are there process questions? Seeing none. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hiller has a process question.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we've had a couple of meetings about this issue, maybe more than a couple, and you, at some point, staff has been considering some alternative ways of handling some of this. At this point, are we going straight into the, is your expectation, we're just going straight into this assessment process and just going to assess them out and see what
Deputy City Manager Gerber, if I may, help to explain this process question.
Councilwoman, no matter what path we choose moving forward, a step we need to take is these assessments. So, that's, that's a legal step in the process that we need to follow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Other questions? Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to clarify for people that live in Lawrence Bay area, that this process started with a petition by the residents, and we have had some turnover in our neighborhoods out there, and people think that it was something the city did, initiated. It was not. It was initiated because the pond had drained, there was that forest growing in the pond, and it took a lot of work to get it to what it is now. But it, it was started by the residents.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no more process questions, I've got a little bit more on each of the projects, which, so you'll be setting tonight a public hearing for the Lawrence Bay area pond, and then also the three Kanza Education Parks. So, if, if you'd like, I can proceed into those projects.
Okay, well, tonight, we are, we are setting the date.
Setting the public hearing.
We're setting the public hearing, and it has to be, it has to be a 10-day notice, so it has to be then two weeks from tonight is when this would be on the agenda, would be the public hearing, and also for action to be taken on the ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Are there other questions about what we are doing? We're really setting a, we're setting the public hearing, and on that, we also have to have a public hearing. If there are no other questions, all right, let's have a public, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was he saying he wanted to do this for the other two, so we set a, is it the same date that you're trying to set? Is that what we're doing?
Councilwoman Ortiz, that is correct. It would set the public hearing for those projects on the same date.
You want to state what those dates, oh yeah, I'm sorry.
I think you had some more.
I'm sorry. You want to go ahead and continue your presentation. I didn't mean to hurry you more than is necessary.
Okay. So, that, we would consider setting the dates for June 21, 2016, to hold those public So, the first project is the Lawrence Bay area pond. At the last meeting, this is also included in your agenda packet, you asked for a map that also showed the subdivisions. So, this shows all the subdivisions that are impacted for the Lawrence Bay Pond area. You also have this map in your packet. So, this was a project that was authorized in 2011, as Councilmember Schwartz alluded to, and that was a petition submitted by area residents to improve the pond, which at that point was in swamp-like conditions. This has a total of 806 units, and so, at that time, or this would just set the public hearing to move forward in a couple of weeks to consider adopting an ordinance and holding a public hearing for this project.
And actually, I think you referred to those, there are the different sections up there. Each one will have a different area, which is identified on the map.
That's correct.
All right. Other questions? Okay, let's proceed with the public hearing.
Okay.
Public hearing is now open. Maybe if you could step aside.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, this would be to set the public hearing for...
Schedule a public hearing. Thank you very much. We're, we're trying to move this along. We're going to get together on it eventually. Are there any questions on scheduling a public hearing?
Lawrence Bay.
Right, right. Is there a motion to approve doing so? Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Okay. And Councilman Jensen, seconds. This is a motion to schedule a public hearing for June 21. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes. This is for, schedule a public hearing for special assessments for the Lawrence Bay Pond Repair and Improvement Project. All right? Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance, the special public hearing for special assessments is approved. We go to item C, Mr. City Manager.
C is to schedule a public hearing on June 21, 2016 for the imposition of special assessments for sanitary sewer, water, and street improvement projects in the Kanza Education and Science Park, and ratify the city clerk's action in publishing on June 6, 2016 the appropriate notices in the official city newspaper.
City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're just seeking the same action on the Kanza. Mr. Kaufman included that in his presentation, so we're just looking for that same approval.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any more to add at this point.
All right. Yeah, you have a question? Yeah.
My company's a prime contractor on two to three contracts on...
He'll be abstaining. Okay. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion, your pleasure? Councilman Jensen?
Move approval.
To approve. Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have eight yes and one abstention by Councilmember...
Eight having voted yes, the public hearing is scheduled. We go to item D, City Council Rules.
D is approval of the revised Topeka City Council Rules and Procedures.
I want to, and you have that, this was before us on May the 10th, and you saw the information, there is a grid. City Attorney, would you like to just review that with us? I believe would be helpful if you have that in front of you. Councilmembers, that's, yeah, that's 5D.
As you mentioned, it's been four weeks since we talked about this last, so I can go through the grid once again if you would like. The major changes that were made were incorporating some of the ideas that Councilmember Hiller had at the time, and I noted each of those, of her suggested changes in the margin of the tracking document that's got line numbers. So, would you like me to go through the entire grid or hit on some of the highlights that you had, or questions from the last meeting?
Why don't you hit those if you want to mention those that are with Councilwoman Hiller's recommendations, and also those that were major points?
Okay. I will do it.
And you have that, and that's a red line, you have that in front of you.
The first one would be at around line 135. It's not assigned an exact section number because it, oh, actually, that one is, that's 2.5A. The suggestion on that one was to add some verbiage at the very end of 2.5A, and that's at line 135, around there. That's really a council decision, but I included it for your consideration.
All right.
The next one would be Section 2.6A. Again, that's proposed addition. That would be around line 170. That's another council decision, so I'll just make a note of that for you all. The next one is, would be around line 178. That would deal with adding some provisions in relation to how the assistant to the mayor and the assistant to the governing body are, I guess, overseeing personnel issues. The next one, I believe that was in there already, that Councilmember Ortiz had asked a question about it, was Section 6.2E. It's at lines 385 and 99. There was a little bit of discussion on that because I believe Councilmember Ortiz had asked about whether or not that would preclude a friendly amendment from occurring any longer. And Robert's Rules of Order outlines kind of how these things are addressed, and before the head of the governing body basically calls a question and asks for a vote, the maker of the motion and the person who seconded that motion must provide their consent if anyone wants to make an amendment. And that's what I would term as a friendly amendment. After the head of the governing body calls for the vote and calls for whether or not there's any further discussion, and the discussion concludes, an amendment can still be made, but no consent is required. So, that wouldn't be a friendly amendment technically, but it still satisfies what I would think would be the democratic process. If, for instance, the maker of the motion and the person who seconded would not agree to allow that person to amend, their only alternative would be after the head of the governing body calls for the vote to be taken, for them to ask for an amendment. Questions on that? Another idea that Councilmember Hiller had was, is found at lines 441 through 446, and it deals with adjournment meetings. She had mentioned that we don't really do that now, so she suggested that perhaps the governing body may entertain deleting that particular provision. And I believe another item of discussion was at lines 535, Section 8.2D, and that dealt with who the chair of the Budget Committee, committee of the whole would be, whether that would be the mayor or the deputy mayor. It's at lines 535 through 38, Section 8.2D. And the change was made, and the recommendation was made by the Citizens Review Committee to have the mayor head up that particular committee, but again, that's a council decision as to what they want to do in that regard. I think that basically hits the highlights from the last meeting.
You had the on line 646 pertaining to minutes on that...
Oh, that is correct. Thank you, Mayor, for reminding me of that. We had had some discussion about whether or not the minute should be provided at the next meeting or at the, at a subsequent meeting. And I think the confusion existed as to, are we able, as clerical staff, to be able to get minutes ready by the next meeting? And so, there's an inclusion of a definition of minutes in this particular provision that basically says they're not verbatim minutes. They're an outline of, of all the action that was taken, who was present, who was absent, who voted what way, and after making that clarification, I think the thought was that there would be no problem with getting the minutes ready by the next meeting.
I think perhaps in going back in the big picture, many of these are references to changes we have made, actually, some due to the state changing the law when elections are held. We changed the voting aspect, which made us a governing body rather than a council. And then we have the one provision in here yet from the Citizens Review Committee. And just so in the, in the background, by, in our charter, it says that we have a Citizens Review Committee, and they are, it's included here in the packet, this is the most recent one, but we had Citizens Review Committees in 1983, 1990, 1999, 2005, and 2014. And the purpose of those committees is to review our governing process, our steps, how we handle things, rules and procedures and all of that. And actually, out of this is where we changed our former government. One of these recommended we change the former government, and so they went through the process of doing that. So, that's where these Citizens Review Committees come from. This one, the most recent one, was held in 2014, and some of their, they had six recommendations. Actually, the first recommendation was that we continue with the city manager, mayor, nine council, city council. So, in a sense, they voted to continue our same basic former government. Then they made other recommendations, some of which we've acted on, and one of the, one of the most significant or interesting was, and those that remember back, we used to have this dilemma on what the mayor votes on. It was approximately 40% of the issues the mayor voted, and others, the mayor didn't. And it was always confusing through everyone, from the mayor, the council members, the public, and no one knew until legal would tell us whether we voted or not. Actually, and the Executive Director of the League of Kansas Municipalities spoke to the Citizens Review Committee and said that this aspect and few others makes it the Topeka governing process probably the most confusing, difficult to understand and follow of any city in the state of Kansas. Actually, out of this, the, they recommended that the mayor vote on all issues except those he has a veto on, and the council approved that. It went to the vote of the people, and the charter was changed. So, there's one example of something that came out of the Citizens Review Committee. So, in a sense, all of those pertaining to charter issues have been handled. The one left that pertains to rules and regulations is this one on who chairs the council-wide committees, and that's rules and procedures. council-wide committees, and that's rules and procedures. And so we've gone through three steps. First, we changed what had to change the charter, then we changed the ordinances that had to be changed, and now finally, the last, we're changing the rules and procedures. So that's where we are in this process. And I went to say, as, after talking to several councilmembers after the meeting a month ago, there was confusion or misunderstanding about this on the mayor chairing these committees, as this was my issue, or this is what I'm doing, or I'm grabbing power, or something like this. This is a recommendation of the Citizens Review Committee. And my role has been to explain where the Citizens Review Committee came from. It's not my issue. I do not have a stand, it's a council decision. That's where it should be. Whatever the council deems appropriate, that's what we would do. In fact, I would say if it should pass, I would recommend it not go into effect until after the next election. To be totally clear, that this is not something that I'm working to get on these committees chairing or anything like that, at all. It's the Citizens Review Committee, it's before you, and I hope, you know, I respect what the judgment is of the council. And I hope that clarifies that particular aspect, and I know this, we have a lot of different things, and Councilwoman Hiller has suggested or considered the possibility that maybe we have this in a committee that would maybe look at these individually and make a recommendation. You want to speak to that?
Well, thank you for that. I do think we, I appreciate the work that the staff did and the updates that the legal staff did, taking the suggestions and the conversation that came out last time and incorporating. I'm not sure how many people realized we had that in the packet for today. Even so, with what, in simple terms, there, I had a list of nine last time. It sounds like two have been resolved out by staff. There are still seven remaining, the text for which two of them needs to be redistributed probably because it's not in this task, and I'm also aware of two other questions and issues, and there may be more, but I'm aware of two. So yes, I would, I would recommend that we refer this to the Policy and Finance Committee. That'll give more councilmembers a chance to be engaged in conversation about it. If it's a committee meeting, in fact, everybody could come if they want to, but that will get the council itself a little more time with this. I'm not, I didn't look at dates, to be honest, so if we're going to refer it to committee, we need, do we need a deadline?
No.
Okay. Then I would simply refer it to Policy and Finance.
I detect that was a motion, right?
Yes, a move back.
All right. And Councilwoman Ortiz seconds. Any discussion on referring this to the committee? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a simple question. So if we're changing the rules from the council rules to the governing body rules, does that mean we're no longer council people, we're governing body people?
No.
Okay. That's all, I was wondering.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Some of the wording has changed, and I think this would be great to send it to Policy, because just like I was questioning one time why the mayor was voting, well, because the rules have changed to governing body and not council. So it's little things like that that we, that we really, really need to look at. I'm looking at the fact of, and I've got some history notes that I, that I drew up when all this was taking place, and I understand the process of it, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your stance on that, but I also look at what the people looked at when, at that particular time that it was done. So just one word can change everything, and that's why, and I know the charter reflects that, but I just want to make sure that we all understand what we're doing when we do it. So that's why I'll be supporting and to have a little bit more time to relook at this again, so that we all get a clear understanding. I do have one question, though. How can we vote on something and then it be, you know, he wants to wait until next year that we start that process? I don't know if we can legally do that. If we were, if we were to pass this, can, we can just put the time limit on it? I'm not caught up in the power of this or the power of that, or who wants to change that, Mr. Mayor, or anybody who thinks I am. I want to continue to make it consistent, and if it's passed, because we're starting to set a precedence then, you know, okay, well then let's do it and wait till I'm out of office. I don't want to see that. And I don't know if that's what he's trying to do. I'm just saying, once it's passed, we need to move forward like we've always done, and is that acceptable to wait?
Councilmember Ortiz, I think what you would do is to pass the document and just retain the language that's currently intact, which would say that the deputy mayor chairs, and then once the election passed, then go back and amend that one provision later.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's what you would do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Claire?
I hope if, I agree it should go to committee, but I hope that you also look at what the review committee, the Citizens Review Committee said, because when I read that, I thought there was a couple, three things that we hadn't done yet, not just this one thing that's left. I'm thinking there's more. So if we're going to do this, we might as well look at all those items.
Okay. Other questions? We have a person to speak and public comment, Joe Ledbetter.
I have a couple of concerns I want to note on the record. First off, there were other things that were in this review committee back in 14. Remember, this was only five people. And one of them was that we'd make the city council races citywide. And I remember coming down here and vehemently opposing that, and I know this council shot that down over a year and a half ago. So I was actually surprised to see these coming back, you know, after we'd already dealt with them one other time. But I certainly would recommend you put this in the, into a committee and study it. One of the things I was looking at when, and I appreciate the mayor's comments that he wasn't trying to do a power grab, because I, I just did not understand why you would take a deputy mayor position and give that to the mayor when we have a deputy mayor. And the deputy mayor is elected not by the city at large, but by the council. So that person, he or she, should be chairing these budgets and chairing the things that deputy mayors have always chaired, in my opinion. I went back and looked at some of the, one of the things that I was told four weeks ago was, while the mayor is elected citywide, now this is no slight on any mayor, but I looked at these election results. In 2005, we had 17,000 people vote for the winning mayor position, and that was like 55% of the vote. In 2009, it was, it had dropped off to 14,000 votes, carried the mayor, and I think he got two-thirds at that time. In 2013, it was only 7,400 citizens voted on the mayor, and we were down to a participation of 14.5%. So that did not make sense to me that it had to be about, whether it's citywide or not, it's, it's part of the council, and the council has to do this budget. And yes, the mayor has a vote, there's no doubt about that, under these rules and under the changes that we, you know, had, had done. But one of the things I did comment four weeks ago was that there was a very strong vote in 2004, and I remember very much pushing for it for several years and lobbying with other people to get it done, was to change the former government from a strong mayor of former government, which was very unpopular. We'd had a series of mayors that were very unpopular, and we wanted a manager former government. We asked for a professional to run the city. And so at no point do I want to, you know, even begin to go back to that process. I mean, we have a manager former government, and that's what the people have chosen, and I, for very good reasons. So those are my comments before I get hoarse here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion before us to defer item 5D to the Policy and Finance Committee. All those in favor vote yes. Opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the, it is referred to the committee. Item E, an ordinance.
E is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson concerning bicycles, roller skates, skateboards, repealing Pica Municipal Code Sections 1020-020 and 1064-10, amending City of Topeka Code Section 1035-010 and repealing original section, and creating new sections 1035-020 and 1035-030.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this came out of committee, so I'm going to kick it back to you and Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes. This was referred to the committee, and I recognize Councilwoman Ortiz, Chair of the committee, to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May the 20th, the Public Health and Safety Committee met, and we heard testimony, and we had a lot of discussion. Councilwoman Hiller joined us, and we heard a lot of discussion, and we heard a lot more discussion, and we had a lot more discussion. And after several discussions and testimony, we voted 2-1 vote and to approve this ordinance. I know there's still some questions out there, and I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve this ordinance as it stands, and I'll take any questions.
Councilwoman Ortiz has moved approval of the ordinance. Is there a second? Councilwoman Schwartz seconds. Okay, we have the ordinance before us, discussion. Councilwoman Claire?
Okay, someone asked me, what's it called? Cycle project? The cycle project at Fourth and Kansas that people cycle there and do, and that is in the area where they will not be able to ride. Is that correct?
I thought the area was changed to, from Sixth to Fifth, from Fifth to Eleventh Street. Yeah, because I specifically asked about that.
Ms. Mayor, do you want to...
It is not included.
No, I didn't think it was in that.
Help us...
Because I specifically asked, because...
Provide the answers, if you would, please.
Councilwoman Ortiz or Claire, they are, from Fourth to Eleventh, those are the boundaries on Kansas Avenue. So where the Topeka Cycle, Topeka Community Cycle Project is, they could not ride on sidewalks in that block.
They'd have to walk their bikes.
They'd have to dismount and walk the bikes.
Do the half walk up there, something like that.
Yeah, it was my understanding that we changed that, because I asked that in the meeting. No?
It's always been proposed at Fourth to Eleventh on Kansas in the, in the ordinance.
Okay.
Also, would there be bike racks for people's bikes?
Where are you going?
There's no, there's no escape.
There are bike racks, yes. So on Kansas Avenue, there have been installed in pretty much the mid-block places, bike racks where the mid-block crossings are. There are also racks that would be allowed on the sidewalks, again, to park your bike so that you could walk it up there, yes.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just want to make sure everyone is very clear that this is not a ban on these vehicles in any capacity at all. All we're asking folks to do is to walk their bike on a block on either side of Kansas Avenue. So if you, and even if you needed to go north to south, the two streets on either side of Kansas Avenue would be available for that. So really, if you need to use a bike or skateboard as a mechanism of transportation, ride on the street to the east or to the west, and then walk it the one block into where you need to go, where there are plenty of locations, many that have just been added to secure it. So I would ask that you all support this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I moved this motion in the committee, and after hearing from nine people that were in support of it, and I think one or one against it, I put on, or two against it, I put on, I'm a member of the Elected.org, it's a blog with municipalities and local units of government. And so I put that question out there, and I had about six cities across the nation that said, they answered it and said yes, that they do have the ordinance. They, one in Oxford, Pennsylvania, actually has a fine of up to $1,000 and 30 days in jail. I know, I was really shocked. There was one in the state of New York that said, Canada Gia, I hadn't even heard of that town, said that yes, they do have it, it's a little hard to enforce, and skateboarders do tear up stairs and parks and that type of thing. But I had overwhelming support for this from those cities that had, had the same similar ordinance to try to protect downtown citizens and downtown businesses from any types of injuries. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Okay. We have persons to speak, probably comment on the issue, if we could proceed with that. First speaker is Michelle Martinez. And some of you, are you aware, speaking here, you have four minutes. The lights there will indicate that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. As you know, my name is Michelle Martinez, and I am a concerned citizen against the proposed skate ordinance in the downtown area. There exists an unfair stigma that skaters, namely skateboarders, are a troublemaking group of vandals that make some people uncomfortable for reasons that may vary. However, the bottom line in regards to the ordinance is the actions of only a few troublemakers in the downtown area is in no way a useful scapegoat to eliminate everyone on wheels from an otherwise public area. A few instances of unwanted behavior, while unfortunate to those involved, is not a valid reason to conclude all skaters be held responsible and take the brunt of others' actions. When we base decisions on mere assumptions we've made, and we base decisions on previous negative instances not reflective of an entire group of people, we end up excluding others while inadvertently telling them they're unwanted and undesired in a particular public area because of what they write. I know our growing downtown is better than this. It reflects an all-inclusive, diverse community, and skaters are a direct component of that vision. Now, I know the public, public safety, the term appears to be used quite a bit in this conversation, but the idea of skaters being a risk to public safety implies that skaters, especially skateboarders, are innately dangerous and unsafe to the public. That kind of rhetoric is completely unfair to describe anyone downtown who wants to perform a healthy and legal physical activity as well as a lifestyle choice. In all actuality, anyone with ill intent can be a risk to public safety. It's worth mentioning the potential dangers of occupying public places are just the same for pedestrians who are not always mindful of others around them. The point is accidents and incidences are inevitable in a public space. If skaters are held responsible for unwanted behavior, so should everyone else occupying the public sidewalks and not have an ordinance altogether. Now, if the issue is public safety, acknowledge that everyone, not just skaters, are responsible to be mindful of other people and have accountability for illegal actions against others. We must educate the public as to what public safety actually means and what that entails, and how we can all come to acknowledge that a public space includes everyone, on wheels or off. Skate culture is a rich and integral part of a diverse community. It boasts health benefits, creativity, a sense of belonging, helps form an identity, encourages geographical awareness, friendship and camaraderie, and provides a direct relationship with community. So please, do not count these people out as some kind of risk to public safety or a transgression to what may be a one-sided view of what a diverse community is supposed to look like. Skaters are the public and should be treated with the same rights and privileges fellow pedestrians such as myself that occupy the streets too, too. And so, council members, Mr. Mayor, in conclusion, I urge you to think carefully about this decision, and the message it will send to all the children, adolescents, and adults who are already disenfranchised people only because the actions of a select few.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Felix Martinez.
Hello, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me today here. Very glad to be with you. Just here to talk about... Just here to talk about a very important topic to me, and I'll use ordinance and ban When I first heard about the proposed skateboarding/rollerblading ban in the downtown area, it hit me pretty hard. See, I've been a citizen of Topeka my entire life, 22-years-old, and for about 12 of those years, and currently, I've been skateboarding. Skateboarding's done so much for me. It's given me friends, a community, and it's given me a pretty good awareness of my surroundings, for example, this town. I attend Kansas State University as a biology major. Being a biology major can be incredibly stressful at times, all the due dates, projects. And one way to manage my stress, the massive stress of school, is to go out and just ride my board. I go solo, pushing around town, or maybe I put some friends to go ride around. We even go skate on the Kansas State University campus, where not only is it accepted, but it is encouraged. And it saddens me that I come back to my hometown, and it doesn't want to do the same. See, skateboarding isn't all about tricks or stunts, which are skills that take skaters many years to develop, and not every skater can make it to that level. Skateboarding is about adventure, a positive outlet, a means of exploring, and a way to be acquainted with this town. I mean, if it wasn't for my skateboard, I wouldn't know most of the downtown area and what it has to offer, from the community to the local shops. On top of that, I met so many people downtown, just from skating, from pedestrians to businessmen and women, residents to the construction workers, to name a few. I'm certain that others have had the same experiences. All in all, the rollerblading/skateboarding ordinance begs the question, how many people will not return to the downtown area because of it? The ban ultimately decides that certain people, including myself, don't belong. I hope that my story and my thoughts will be taken into consideration as a reflection of the immense impact of what skateboarding has done for me and people like myself. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lisa Stubbs.
My name is Lisa Stubbs, and I'm pleased to be here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and welcome to our newest council member. I'm actually going to go almost completely off-script based upon the comments that we had here just before this, because I don't want anybody to walk away from this council meeting, or who might be listening on TV, to think that there is anything about what is being proposed tonight that would be against a group of people. There is nothing about this that is against a group of people. And it is a public safety issue, but not because of the individuals, but simply because of the activity that they are taking place on a public sidewalk with pedestrians. As many of you know, my husband and I bought a building downtown, and we live downtown. We love it downtown, our dog and cat love looking out the window downtown and watching all the people go by. It's our home. And so we get a bird's-eye view, not just an occasional view, of what goes on downtown. And what we see on an extremely regular basis, and by that I mean 50 times a day for bicycles and almost every day for skateboarders, are people who nearly get hit, or people who do get hit, by bicycles and skateboarders downtown. I believe it was Councilmember Cleare who mentioned that she had a constituent, an elderly person, who said she would never come down again to downtown because she was scared to death by, I think it was bicyclists, but it could have been skateboarders, that she felt a personal safety issue to herself. Imagine being an older person and having bicycles and skateboards flying by you, or worse yet, in our case, because we have a 1930 building, there is no sightline when you walk out of your front door. It's the way those buildings were built. And so when you step out, anything that's coming fast from one side or the other is going to hit you, you have no time to react. It's really only a matter of time before there is a really horrible, significant accident on the avenue because of bicycles and skateboards. I will honestly say, I've never seen rollerblades or roller skates. So I personally don't consider that an issue. I know it is part of the ordinance here this evening. What I would like to see is a recognition that all people are welcome downtown, and we want skateboarders to feel welcome, we simply don't want the activity of skateboarding where it could harm another person to take place in an extremely small area downtown. We're talking a very few amount of blocks in total. They have the entire rest of the city. So it's like 99.9 percent where skateboarding is allowed on sidewalks, and 0.1 percent where we're asking for an accommodation for those people coming in and out of buildings, large amounts of pedestrians. I also happen to work at a company that employs a ton of young people, of which I'm sure some of them take part in skateboarding. I did this quick survey as I could with as many as I possibly could, and you would be surprised to know that none of them wanted skateboarding or bicycles on the sidewalks in downtown because they felt like that would diminish our ability to get restaurants and a nightlife downtown. They too want to be able to have an area to gather and enjoy without that kind of interaction. And as a note, which we've mentioned before, both Manhattan, Kansas, and Lawrence, Kansas have this ordinance. And so I cannot believe that it is anti-young person or anti-skateboarders if those two towns, of all towns in our state, have embraced this kind of ordinance for public safety. I myself, when I was on City Council, championed the second skateboard park that we had put in our town. I am a lover of skateboarders as well as anyone else, I just know there is a time and a place for those kinds of activities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Vince Frye.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Vince Frye, President of Downtown Topeka. I appreciate the comments that preceded me. I came before you when this ordinance was presented initially. I also went to the Public Health and Safety Committee to let you know that the merchants and the residents that we talked to are in support of this ordinance. As has been stated, we want downtown to be inclusive of everybody. Certainly, that is something that we have always been in favor of and want for the future. Today, I was given a call by the manager of the properties that Howard Paul owns downtown. She could not be here tonight, but she wanted me to let you know that they have had thousands of dollars' worth of damage over the years from skateboarders. In fact, in the 515 building, they're currently undergoing renovation of damage done by skateboarders. The manager of the Tansite Plaza called me last week to express his support because of the thousands of dollars of damage that they've had. However, the most important thing that they wanted me to share with you was not the damage, but the safety issue that they have for the people that go into their buildings, work there, the people that are residents downtowns, and quite frankly, for the skateboarders and the cyclists in this community. In the last two months, we had a cyclist that was hit by a car because he was going so fast on the sidewalk as they came out of the parking lot that he couldn't stop. We've had a little girl that was hit by a cyclist on the sidewalk as she came out of a building and was hurt badly. We've had some skateboarders that are very good at what they do, who wiped out, and their skateboard almost hit some people walking down Kansas Avenue. And granted, many times, it's only a few people that cause these actions. Unfortunately, it's difficult to sort them out from the rest. As was stated, this is an ordinance that has been supported in Manhattan and Lawrence. And, you know, if you support this, why, obviously, it would not just eliminate the safety issue, but it would also eliminate the damage issue. So, again, Downtown Topeka Incorporated is in support of this, and we would hope that you would be too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Carl Bundenberger.
Good evening, members of the Council, Mayor, City Manager, and staff. I'm pleased to speak before you tonight for this opportunity. My name is Carl Bundenberger, as you know, and I manage the Bike Share program for the city through Topeka Metro. And at Topeka Metro, we understand that transportation is a challenge for many people in Topeka. Our bus service does thousands of trips a day, thousands of rides, and our bike service now does thousands of trips a month. We didn't know for sure that we would see that much activity when we added these bicycles to the transportation mix of Topeka, and we have been absolutely thrilled at the public and private support that that system has had. Knowing these transportation challenges in the city, being part of the Bike Ways Committee as well as the Pedestrian Master Plan Advisory Committee, we know that it's a difficult mix in every part of the city to give citizens access to the places where they need to go or want to go. In some parts of town, there just aren't sidewalks. Folks pushing strollers or rollerblading, skateboarding, bicycling are forced to join the street with motorists. And in some places, that's fine, because speeds aren't great. But ideally, we have a place for everyone. And one of those places where there is a pretty good mix of street uses is downtown Topeka. The streets are slow, so it's a great place where bicycle traffic and car traffic can merge, and the sidewalks are wide, so reasonable folks on foot and on wheels can share those venues. So I'd urge some more discussion, more work on this ordinance. It's a complex issue, and while it is absolutely critical that we preserve these investments that we've made downtown, not just recently, but in decades past, it's also important that we make sure we're prepared to welcome everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Andy Frye.
Hello, Mayor and members of the Council. Most of my thoughts have been shared earlier, but I just thought I'd add a few more points. Having been involved with this ordinance from the bicycle aspect from its beginning, like probably more than a year ago, I want to make sure it's real clear that the Bike Ways Advisory Committee was not necessarily in favor of this version of the ordinance. It was brought before the Bike Ways Advisory Committee, and we didn't support it for some of the various reasons that have been named here this evening. In addition to that, we're just concerned about limiting access to different recreational users downtown, whether it's aimed at the person or the activity itself, and would rather see more constructive ways of embracing these individuals through creating parks for them to recreate in or finding avenues for that to happen rather than segregating them away from a certain street. A couple other quick notes. We've been speaking this evening a lot about how downtown sidewalks have the potential to be bustling with people and pedestrians. And one example that I can think of within Topeka that has a significant amount of pedestrians, skateboarders, skaters, and bicyclists is the Shunga Trail, as well as the Landon Trail, both of which, all these users seem to coexist with some sort of enforcement and understood rules that are there, enforcement being the key. I'm not aware of this, the existing law of this being enforced particularly heavily, and an awareness, it seems to be lacking. So I would suggest that perhaps with further enforcement and discussion of the existing law, rather than making a complete out-and-out ban, might actually bring some positive results rather than making this significant leap to ban a specific group of users. And then lastly, there's been mention of the Lawrence Ordinance of a similar nature. This ordinance, in doing some basic research on the Internet, was passed in 1996. That's relatively dated in terms of downtown development and development techniques. In specific, if you read the language that they used in writing it, it refers to limited sidewalk access or limited sidewalk setbacks. I would hope that with this relatively current design we've got going in downtown, it's supposed to add feet of space, you know, like 10 to 15 feet of sidewalk. We don't have nearly the issue that Lawrence would have had 15 or, you know, 10 years ago, or 20 years ago today. So I'm not sure that comparing the two is really a relevant discussion based on the fact that this was written in a different time, for a different city, at a different point. So I would thank you for listening to my comments and answering any questions you might have.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We have a motion and second on the ordinance before us. Is there other discussion? Councilwoman Schwartz.
Your Honor. I would like to ask legal, it was brought up, the liability issue, and if we have a large injury, somebody paralyzed or whatever, who's liable? Is it the property owners? Does the city have any liability of something since we are considering this, or who's actually going to pay for the damages?
Councilmember Schwartz, I don't know if I can really answer that clearly, because everything's going to depend on what the particular facts and circumstances are. I could probably give you a pretty good guess that we'd be named, and it would all have to funnel out through the legal system, and wherever the chips fall, they fall, but we'd probably have to be involved in some way in the litigation.
Okay. And then, my second question is, we're not really outlawing, we're asking that they dismount, or they carry a skateboard, or push a bicycle, or if they're on roller skates, they would carry their roller skates. Four blocks is that, from?
It's at four.
Four or five blocks from?
It's...
Seven.
Seven blocks, from 4th Street to?
11th.
11th, okay.
Fourth to 11th.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions discussed? Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, the Cycle Projects are like 423 Kansas, and this is going to 4th. Is there any reason it's went all the way to 4th? Because the streetscape stops at 6th, I believe. Correct?
We're asking, Byard, could you speak to that?
As we have it now, Councilman Emerson, the ban, the dismount zone, if you will, is 110 blocks. And so by shrinking it down to the Kansas Avenue, 4th to 11th area, we looked at where the highest pedestrian activity would be, and where those storefronts or those buildings are flush with the sidewalk. And so 4th, or the 400 block, ended up being, at least on that side, one of those.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I guess in my mind, it's kind of silly that if you have a business that's specifically for bikes, for bicycles, to not be able to ride a bike to it. Does that strike anyone else as odd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm trying to get Google Maps pulled up here fast enough. If indeed it's at 4th and Kansas, and the dismount zone stops there, then you could easily approach from the north and ride right up to it. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, it would stop right there, or at the very least, you'd have to walk half a block, and that's a very, very popular spot anyway. So generally, there's lots of people hanging outside there anyhow, so you wouldn't be able to ride at the front door anyway, is my understanding.
Right. You'd have to go past 4th Street, so south of 4th, right to 423. So 5th, 5th would be great in that case, correct?
Is it at 4th or 5th Street? I can't remember where it's at.
The dismount is saying 4th.
I'm sorry, where the Cycle Project is.
423 is where that came from.
Okay, so...
So it's between 4th and 5th.
So, again, you're going to have to walk a half a block then, at that rate.
Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I worked downtown. I've almost been hit by a bike on my way to this meeting, Public Health and Safety meeting. There was, we really need to educate the people on the bikes. They're on the sidewalk, and they're not trying to weave, they're just going straight through, they're flying through. And I've thought about this long and hard, and I thank the Martinez's for their testimony. We do think about this long and hard. Last night, I was at 17th and Washburn, and I was heading... Last night, I was at 17th and Washburn, and I was heading north, getting ready to make a left-hand turn on 17th Street, and I heard this car honking and honking, and I'm like, who in the heck are they honking at? And there was a skateboarder right in the middle of the street. I'm seeing so many more skateboarders in the middle of the street at a busy intersection, and he flew out in front of me. And again, we have got to educate not just the skateboarders, but the bicyclists that fly, and, you know, for their safety, and it's pretty scary. But if you see all the people that are working downtown during the noon hour and afterwards, it's terrible. And that's why I will be supporting this, for, again, for safety reasons, until we figure out a way to really, really educate them. And I looked at the distance, too, and if we're going to do it, we have to do it and make it bold, and everybody understands it, and I think to cut that block off, people are going to be so confused on where to stop and start, so I think that's why we need to be so bold with that. Also, I did talk to Mr. Green, who is one of our cyclists, TPD cyclists, and I was like asking him about rollerblades, because it kind of, you know, I'm like, but you know what? They're just as good as the skateboarders, and he showed me some things that they have done damage to. So I think we need to send a loud and clear message, and they said they're going to be discreet about it, and I think we're sending a loud and clear message by passing this ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some wrap-up comments. I do want to compliment the Martinez's, I thought your comments were good. I really appreciate that. As chair of the Bike Ways Committee, you know, that I've been struggling with this, and then representing downtown, it has been a struggle with me, particularly once the skateboard issues got added, because it's not really quite the same, just to, and also the struggle that ordinances alone do not solve problems, and I want to make sure that with whatever we do, that we're creating something that's meaningful, that's narrow enough, but meaningful enough, that it should work. Just in terms of backing up, it was tough at first. We did spend about a year in Bike Ways, and the cyclists did finally agree that maybe it would be best to have the bicycles off Kansas Avenue itself, not that broader point, because it wasn't even discussed at that point, but that it might be best for all. Yes, people are going to have to learn their dismount routines, we're all going to have to learn that, where you get off and walking your bikes, because the racks are on sidewalks. The issues really are separate, and we've all struggled with that, but one is the safety issue of just pedestrians walking on the sidewalk, going about their business. This damage issue is a separate issue, though obviously, if you've said dismount in this particular area, it's a little easier to just ask somebody to leave. I asked a lot of questions of staff, and I really appreciate those answers. I want to share some of them with everybody, because we haven't touched on them tonight. Regarding skateboard damage, and the design elements of it on the property, I have been assured by the primary design person for the Downtown Topeka Foundation that the deterrent hardware has been ordered to be added to the damaged installations in the pocket parks, and to be included in the rest of them. So that should help in terms of those wonderful installations not being a magnet in the pretty near future. We had hoped that the criminal damage ordinance would, should take care of things, but it doesn't quite, and we should all just know that. I've been advised that our current criminal damage ordinance requires proof of intent for the officers to make a choice to arrest or ticket and carry something forward. I had inquired, had a chat with legal staff about whether, about the wisdom of adding the term carelessness or recklessness to that, in order to open up the ability for us to take criminal, for inappropriate circumstances for criminal action to be taken. Was advised that legal, for a variety of reasons, did not think that was advisable. So I wish there were more we could do here, but that's where we are, so we shouldn't overcount on what that's going to do. Regarding the ability to place street furniture or other items near doorways to kind of naturally push people out farther into the sidewalk, I commit to pursuing that if needed. In these busy, apparently, you still have to get a permit if you want to put a railing in, and I was advised, and didn't pursue it any deeper, that really, aside from the little signboards, that, and even though we said that the reason we made these wide sidewalks was so that the merchants could do all, set furniture out and do all kinds of things that they wanted, that they really don't have permission to do that. So it turns out that, you know, to get people permission to put a jardineer at either side of their doorway, which still, you have pedestrians that walk down the street with their earbuds on, not paying attention, or walking, or working on their cell phones, so we may need to look into that if it turns out that it's a problem. Regarding the day-to-day safety and skateboard damage, I checked with the police department. Could you do more? The assurance that I have so far is that policing will simply be in accordance with need. I know this is normal, and I know that we have to have citizen assistance on such matters to have a lively downtown that we want, and to create the culture of safety that we want, and to have the responsiveness that people need. I personally think we need to do a little more than that for downtown. So I would ask that we consider, and I'll continue asking, for two things. One is that there is extra regular enforcement planned for downtown. Perhaps this could be through our volunteer program, or perhaps creation of a downtown community policing district in and of itself. And second, I mean, one of the reasons the Bike Ways folks and a lot of people have been working so hard on all these ordinances is so that we can get them in place and then enforce them, but also educate people about them, so we all can intuitively understand what the rules are, and see it when we go down Kansas Avenue, for instance. So I hope that there would be an initiative, not necessarily with ticketing, but with a zero-tolerance focus, perhaps when the final pocket park is done and downtown is all ready to go. The police have done a really good job with initiatives from time to time, and if we could have one then, to establish the culture that our sidewalks are pedestrian-only, so that the idea of dismounting your wheels would be intuitive, not something somebody in a uniform has to tap you on the shoulder, or that Tom Stubbs has to call in, I think would be really helpful for us to set that stage. I also do have heard that there are some proposals floating around to establish more open streets events for people on wheels of all kinds, as well as to consider another skateboard park, or a district, even Jackson Street, for instance, being a thoroughfare. And I would like to see us consider, continue to keep our ears open and consider supporting some things like that. And with that, I, with all these mixed feelings, will support this ordinance this evening.
Is there other discussion? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just briefly want to try and end on a bit of a happy note. Right now, there's a massive area of downtown that you're technically not supposed to bike in at all. And in looking at that, it's absolutely not the right fit for a community that's learning to walk, and learning to bike, and even myself included, trying to get away from a car and get out and enjoy riding around sometime. And so the celebration aspect of this ordinance, while overshadowed by some of the other conversation, is that we are indeed shrinking the existing dismount zone drastically. My hope is that in doing so, we'll encourage people to get out and explore the rest of downtown on bikes. I would also hope to see, instead of a sign that says, "No, you can't," have a detour sign. If you're on a bike, detour around. I think there's some positive ways that we can guide people that are trying to use transportation around the dismount zone. I see you giggling over there. So I think there's some positive ways we can steer folks around the dismount zone into the now newly opened area they could ride in, and I would like to see that happen, and I will support this. Having said that, though, I do think we should revisit this in six months, a year. Let's make sure if we're actually going to have this dismount zone, that it's working, that it's solving the problem, and if it's not, let's get rid of it, let's change it. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing because I'm thinking of the blue bikes on Fifth and Kansas Avenue, that will now have to be walked a block away.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is hitting our business owners a block away to ride them.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Understand clearly that bicycles are legal on the street, so...
Not in the dismount zone.
Yes.
That's not...
Yes.
Oh, that's news to me, that's not what I was told.
You misstated a little bit earlier, because the bicycles are legal on the street, so they'll be able to ride up to a crosswalk or a corner and dismount. I think we've got a little more of a challenge with the skateboarders, because they would have to walk the whole district, because, and we all learned this along the way, skateboarders are not legal on the street. They are, their state law says they're pedestrians, and so they're okay wherever people can walk, but they are not okay on the street. I don't know if it's worth at some point considering doing a reversal for downtown so that the skateboards and cyclists could both use the street. I know that people have been concerned about accidents and skateboards getting loose, and that that's why it's not included here now, but the boarders would have to walk in, and they'd be fine, the cyclists can ride in.
Okay, are we about to the point where we vote? All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion to approve the ordinance, bicycle skate, skateboards, pedestrians. All of them favor, vote yes. Those vote no, I vote yes.
We have eight yes, Mr. Cohen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. We now go to the non-action items. We have three items for discussion. The first is for the clerk to read.
Is discussion of amendments to the dangerous dog ordinance.
I think the city attorney is going to introduce this for us.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. Chief of Prosecution, Chuck Kitt, is here to discuss this issue, so I'll ask him to come up and speak on it.
All right, Mr. Kitt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmembers. The ordinance that I'm proposing an amendment to is our dangerous dog ordinance. First, I want to state that this ordinance has been on the books since September of 2010, I believe is when it was passed. I know that there was extensive public comment on this ordinance when it was passed. There was a lot of research that went into it. This is a very well-thought-out ordinance, and I believe that the city of Topeka has been given a lot of praise for this ordinance and the effects that it's had. Some of the things that the ordinance overall deals with would be the treatment of feral cats, the catch and release, and sterilizing them. It covers the tethering of animals outside, and cruelty to animals, that sort of thing. And it also resulted in removing the pit bull ban in Topeka, and I know we've received a lot of praise on that. One of the things, I heard Councilwoman Jensen say on the last discussion, was we should revisit the skateboard ordinance, and that's all I want to do with this dangerous dog ordinance, is just revisit it, because I think there's a couple of ways that it can be improved and still keep what was accomplished back in 2010. Mainly, what I'm wanting to do is, as the ordinance is currently written, if a dog is deemed dangerous, and there's a definition provided in the ordinance, and I did a handout, I don't believe it got attached to the agenda, but I believe it was passed out this evening. And you can see in the left-hand column, the provisions of the current ordinance, and you can see the definition of a dangerous dog is not being changed. That's a dog with a known propensity or tendency to attack or cause injury, or otherwise threaten the safety of humans or domestic animals, a dog in a vicious or threatening manner that approaches a person in an apparent attack, a dog unprovoked that attacks or bites, or has attacked or bitten a human, a dog that was previously determined to be vicious under our prior ordinance, or a dog harbored primarily for the purpose of dogfighting. All of that would remain the same. The issue that I have with how the ordinance is written is, when it comes to the dangerous dog part and the possession of a dangerous dog, currently, it requires, in order to prosecute, if you possess this dog, any dog that meets this definition, you're guilty of possessing a dangerous dog, and you're subject to a fine of, it's outlined here, $1 to $499, and there's up to 179-day jail sentence. If you were, if that dog then is, attacks a person, or does another violation of a dangerous dog, at that point, the municipal court is required, the court shall destroy that animal. And the issue that we've had with enforcing this ordinance is, as you can see from the very broad definition of a dangerous dog, a dog could be ordered to be destroyed on a second offense, and it never could have bitten a person. There never, this, the way the ordinance is written, if it approaches somebody in a vicious or threatening manner, on two occasions, that dog has to be destroyed, regardless of the fact that it never actually bit somebody or attacked somebody, that dog has to be destroyed. The flip side of that is, if a dog attacks somebody in a very vicious manner, causes severe injury or death to that person or a domestic animal, and it just happens to be the first offense, the court doesn't have discretion to destroy that animal. And so you've got one pet owner saying, "My dog never actually bit anybody, but it has to be destroyed," and you have the victim of an extremely vicious attack on the other end of the spectrum saying, "What do you mean, this animal gets to go home?" And we've, I've seen a couple of examples of this in the short time that I've been here, since October of this last year. And how this came to my attention, the first instance was, last fall, there was an incident in the central area of Topeka, in one of the parks, where two pit bulls got loose and went after people in the park, children, adults, people of all ages. I mean, the video of this incident was horrific. There were adults trying to get kids up on the playground equipment as the dogs were going around biting and attacking different people. Several people were severely injured, chunks of their leg taken out by these dogs. The police came out, the fire department tried using water hoses on the dogs to get them at bay. Eventually, one of the dogs had to be shot, and the other dog, using a lot of resources, they were able to get that dog into custody, but it was a first offense for those dogs. And so when it came time for me to prosecute that case, I saw I had no option to have that dog, those dogs destroyed, because the dog that was shot did survive. And that's when I first started looking at this ordinance. And now, the trial for that case was set in January, it ended up in a plea, the owner surrendered the dog, so it wasn't as important in that case. The second instance came up in February, when a six-year-old girl here in Topeka was attacked by the neighbor's German shepherd, and it was an attack, it was not a bite. There's been some media coverage of this event, and the girl suffered what I would consider severe injuries. She was scratched and clawed and bit numerous times by this shepherd, unprovoked. And when that case came into municipal court, the court had no option but to release that dog, even after the owner was convicted of possessing the dangerous dog. So now this six-year-old girl goes home every day and sees this dog next door, and that's a problem. So the amendments that I've proposed, and that I've vetted with the rest of legal staff, would be, if a dog attacks a domestic animal or a human being, and that attack results in great bodily harm or death, then the court shall put that animal down, shall destroy that dog. However, I'm also recommending that on repeat offenders, if there is not great bodily harm or death involved, that the court keeps discretion on whether that dog has to be put down. So a lot of the headlines that I've seen recently, and I've received, I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails today about, "Why are you trying to do this to the ordinance?" And everybody was under the impression that I'm trying to kill more dogs, or have more dogs destroyed, and I'm doing the opposite, actually. I'm trying to give the court discretion that only those dogs that are actually dangerous and a threat to public safety... and a threat to public safety, those dogs have to be put down. If there is a genuine question of that dog being a danger to the public safety, the court would have discretion in those cases. So that's the purpose of these amendments. And hopefully, this outline I provided explains that. And really, that, I guess, that's my presentation on this ordinance and why I think the ordinance, although great, and it has accomplished a lot for the city, I think it can be improved.
Are there questions for Mr. Kitt? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. How does the court determine great bodily harm?
The reason I chose great bodily harm, as many of you know, I prosecuted for about 10 years across the parking lot in district court. And the difference, what I modeled this after was the difference between battery, which is a misdemeanor, and aggravated battery, which is a felony. And there's various levels of that. And the determining factor is, was there harm or unwanted contact versus great bodily harm? And that's not defined in the state statutes. But our Supreme Court, in interpreting that, has said that great bodily harm means more than trivial, minor, moderate harm. It's something more than that. Mere bruising is not enough. It's got to be great bodily harm. And it's not a bright-line test that you can just define and then determine whether or not each injury fits within that. It's a question for the finder of fact in each case. The finder of fact has to determine, was great bodily harm committed? And in cases in municipal court, the finder of fact would be the judge. But if convicted, that person has the right to appeal over to district court. And there are the opportunities for jury trials if that's what the person wants to pursue. So the finder of fact, just like it would be with battery versus aggravated battery, would be either the judge or the jury, depending on what setting we're in. And it would depend on the facts of the case.
Thank you.
Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a call from a lady, and I thought, since we're doing this, what is on the books for dogs at large? This lady was telling me that this particular dog has been in her, on her property four times.
And the dog was sighted all four times, and she signed the ticket. I spoke with the same lady today.
Ms. Fannestal?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And I think that was an issue with training with the particular ACO. And that ACO, Animal Control Officer, is no longer an ACO with TPD. But the ordinance as written, a dog found at large can be impounded. And I believe she received information from the ACO that the dog couldn't be impounded unless it was a dangerous dog. And that's just not accurate.
Okay. And that's what I was wondering. Councilwoman Hiller and myself, and I think it was just us two, we worked tirelessly on this, and I thought we covered that. So I wanted--
You did. And it is covered in the ordinance. Like I said, I think it was a training issue with that particular ACO.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Mr. Emerson?
Yeah, Mr. Kitt, thank you for being here, for presenting this. I had a question. When you say you're giving the judge discretion here by taking out the shall, is there a reason both of these couldn't be may? So if someone has, is, if he judges great bodily harm or death was caused, but there's other continuing circumstances under this, he wouldn't have any choice but to kill the animal, correct?
That's correct, under the way I've written it. And currently, that's how it's written. The court shall, it just requires a second offense regardless of injury. I'm just taking away the second offense, but adding that it has to be great bodily harm. So I'm keeping the shall language, but I'm just changing the circumstances that applies. But I'm not sure how much you want me to go into, but there are several defenses built into the ordinance for a dangerous dog. For example, if the dog is being provoked and then it attacks, it can't be found a dangerous dog, and therefore would not, the owner would not be guilty of this. If the dog was on the owner's property and was protecting its litter or a member of the family, the dog could not be found to be a dangerous dog. And there's several defenses that are built in to the ordinance.
And the shall here would not negate those?
No. If it was on its own property, protecting its litter or homeowner, or if it was being provoked, we wouldn't be prosecuting it in municipal court. And so that issue wouldn't be in front of the judge.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hiller?
I had a couple of questions, but that was one of them. Chuck, help me if you inserted the language someplace else, but something that gave, that troubled me greatly was that lines 119, 120, and 121 are the exact language that you're talking about, and they've been stricken.
Because that language is found in the definition of dangerous dog. And that's in TMC 6.05.01OB.
And is that on, is that something we have?
It's in my outline. I don't know that you have the actual language of the ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not in the outline. It's found in that dangerous dog definition, though. I just didn't include that in there. But that's basically--
I'm sorry.
What we struck is repetitive language from the dangerous dog definition.
Do we have 05-- oh. Do we have the section that you're making reference to in what was handed to us?
No. I don't believe I presented you with the complete dangerous dog language, which would include those exceptions. I don't know if we have the ability to pull that up.
Well, we don't necessarily have to go through it tonight, but, you know, Councilwoman Ortiz is right. I mean, we worked this thing for a year with experts and with all the advocacy organizations to do the best that we could, that the city could, really, to cover all those what-ifs and to make sure, and the animal advocates were willing to have dogs put down. I mean, obviously, you don't know the history of what we changed from to what came here. It seemed to me that where we ended up with was that, and I do think the whole council needs to see all that language before we would make any changes, so people can see if something really is covered elsewhere. It's just too risky to do it piecemeal. Because what I, my recollection of where it ended up was that if there'd been an attack, that the dog would be kept. You've got the language in here that they would expedite the hearing, so that the hearing would be within 14 days. Because when the dog is held, it's at the owner's expense. And so it was to make sure it wasn't to owners for the owner. Dog wouldn't be killed right away. Get the 14 days. We also built in there the option that it could be kept at a veterinarian's instead of it helping hands, if that helped the owner to save a little money. But they couldn't have the dog back. Then the judge could decide whether the dog, based on the circumstances and the judge's decision about how severe any injuries were, the judge could decide whether the dog would be put down. And the language was in there that that could happen. So that it protected the life of the dog just for two weeks, so that the judge could look at all the facts and a little time could pass also from the immediacy of whatever that event was. And I need to be walked through it further. But it seemed that that was providing the ability to deal with the dog. Other things, of course, needed to be in there to deal with the owner, and fines and so on. And that if there was something that needed to be fixed, maybe it was a little more on the issues of allowing how dangerous dogs could be kept. I mean, I've gotten some comments about that, that it's not healthy for a dog to just be held inside forever, and things like that. But that we really had covered how to handle the issues themselves.
Councilwoman Hiller, to address your first question, the language that's stricken from lines 119 through 121 are, in fact, in 6.05.01B. I included paragraphs 1 through 5 in my outline. Paragraphs 6 and 7 are the defenses, and that language is included in the defenses in 6 and 7. And that's in the definitions of a dangerous dog.
And that, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble keeping up with that. So that is in what we have?
Yes. The definition of a dangerous dog and those instances that would be specifically excluded from the dangerous dog is covered in the definition of dangerous dog.
What would the line number be? That would help me.
The definition is not in the proposed ordinance that we're changing. We're proposing just the language on possession of a dangerous dog. We're not, we didn't propose any amendments to the definition itself, which is in a different ordinance. And so that's why that language is not in front of you.
Maybe this could be, have a meeting and work this out, rather than get your questions answered.
Well, maybe. And what did happen last time was after it had been worked by the working group with the city attorney's office, the Public Health and Safety Committee did a public hearing on it, and allowed, you know, there was some advance work done so that the word could go out to the advocacy groups, no matter what they were advocating, you know, concerned citizens. And then there was an opportunity, I mean, we could certainly do it at a council meeting. But I found that when we worked that process before, the input and the case examples and, okay, how would this work here, and how would this work there, from the citizens and the people who are more experienced than I was, was really helpful to be sure that we had the wording just right. And I would encourage us, again, either in the full council meeting or in committee, to make sure we had plenty of time for people to look at it.
Thank you. Other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, that completes our discussion on the dangerous dog ordinance amendment. And we will then, this will be coming before us for action. Go to second item. Court could read.
Be his discussion--
I'm sorry. Point of order, Mr.--
Thank you, Your Honor. Don't we have some conferees on that?
You are correct. I am sorry. I missed that. Thank you for pointing that out. We do have conferees on that item 6A versus Dick Ketterman.
I came specifically to talk about this amendment to this ordinance that Jewish City Prosecutor has brought up here. To give you a little background, back in the '70s, I was the assistant director of the Topeka Humane Society for two years. And in the early '80s, I was the director of the Humane Society in Lawrence for three and a half years. I have put down hundreds of animals, cats and dogs. So it always leaves me with a bad feeling in my stomach when I think about that happening to any animal for any reason. I do agree that an animal that has attacked someone viciously should probably be put down. The problem I had with this, I'd rather see the judge have total discretion as to what's going to happen from, on a case-by-case basis. You just can't put the same brand on every case that happens. I'm not making light of the situation that happened in February with, I think her name's Arianna or something like that, and the injuries. And the picture that I saw of Arianna, there looked like scratch marks. I don't know if she was bitten or not. I don't know the whole history on the injuries to the young girl. But you had a situation there that was about to happen. You had a dog tied to a chain or a rope, probably inefficient on one end or the other. The collar broke, the chain broke. You've got some kids, in this case, little kids, out playing, and the dog's going to get excited. This can happen with a puppy. This can happen with an adult dog. I really despise chains. I think they're a bad way to handle, and I would even like to get together with some city council people and see about changing that law that was passed in 2010 on the leashes. Some things could be added to that to prevent exactly what happened in February. And I've had ideas on that for a long time. I just didn't know who or how to bring them about to y'all to talk about this, something like that. I'm trying, the part of the ordinance that I was really concerned about was if an animal, and thankfully, the city prosecutor's cleared this up for me a little bit. I'd hate to see an animal like this little German shepherd pup be put to death for the type of action that has occurred in this case. Now, I know it hasn't been, and from what I understand, won't be. But problems like this come from the pet owners more than it does the pet. And I'm asking you to look at this a little bit closer and hopefully leave the decision with the judge on the determination. I'm against euthanasia. In some cases, it has to happen. So if you have any questions, I appreciate allowing me to talk to you today.
Thank you for your comments. Are there questions? Mr. Ketterman? Or could it be something to follow up? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Joe Ledbetter.
A few weeks ago, I spoke to this group about a pit bull that had gotten loose in a neighborhood. A very dear friend of mine was terrified to go to the mailbox because this pit bull had broken a logging-type chain. I mean, it was a large chain. And confronted me, of all people. I was annoyed. Anyway, this dog later chased down a child from, that was getting off a bus, same neighborhood. I did contact the manager, the chief. They dealt with the dog, but the dog got returned after being incarcerated for a few days. I don't know all the particulars of it. The dog, to our knowledge, had not bitten anybody, but he certainly wanted to. And I had a very large stick between me and him, and I would have used it. And I have no problem with it. Because I'm not going to be bitten by a dog. But what I have concern about is, we have elderly people that cannot so quickly defend themselves. We have children. And having, you know, I've been a parent, and I'm telling you, I used to have large dogs. I had shepherds, and they were beautiful, and they were very well-trained, and I took very good care of them. But I would not have those kind of dogs in the city now. I just wouldn't. Now that I've seen what a large dog, you see these photographs, you see, you hear stories of little children being hunted by pack behavior of more than one dog, that's probably what happened in that park. Those dogs turned to wild pack behavior, and they just went on a melee. And when you have a dog hunt a child that is living next door to them, and they can leap a four-foot fence with no problem, I mean, some of these large dogs can leap much larger fences than that, and enclosures. I think I would strengthen the ordinance. I would not give discretion to the court. I'd say you will put them down. And I think I would add some more language. I'm not exactly sure where I'd put it. I might discuss it next week if I come up and speak on this. But I think if a child 14 or under is attacked, I think that dog will be put down. And if, and by an attack, I mean, they break the skin, they do multiple bites, and those are very easy to document. That dog has no business living in this city. And I just heard, oh, it's the owner's fault. Well, you know, isn't that what they all say? I mean, it's always the owner's fault. It's never the dog's fault. But I'm sorry, if they're not well-trained, and if they're not enclosed, and if that person isn't, doesn't have a proper pen for a dog that will leap a fence, who are we to blame? And just the liability of having an animal like that on your property, you know, just thinking as a lawyer, I just, I don't understand people wanting a pit bull that runs the streets of high crest and thinking that there's immunity for them. So now, that's high crest, but I've seen very large dogs that are jumping on fences, barking at little kids in other neighborhoods. And it's just a matter of time till that dog just goes right over that fence if the owners aren't around. Well, they're at work. Okay, so was it the dog's fault or the owner's fault? Obviously, the owner wasn't taking proper care of the animal, or didn't care enough about their neighbors to enclose that dog properly. But at some point, we've got to deal with the dog. And so I support strengthening this ordinance, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That completes our discussion on the dangerous dog ordinance. I apologize again for missing the two persons on their request to speak. I have two requests that we take a short break. So we'll take a break for, let's try to keep it to five minutes or a little bit more when we get back. Thank you.
I'm still here, I do, okay? I'm still your attorney, okay?